One adjustment, we will not take a vote on Section 4, Item B. And this, this meeting is being videotaped.
We're going to have your cell phones.
Okay.
Cell phone needed.
We'll move on to public comment. Okay, state your name and time of call, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Paul Harley Whitman. You say this isn't the proper place for my questions, comments, and concerns. So I have a few questions to assess that I would like, like address tonight. In the committee chair's best words, I would like a brief summation of the responsibilities of the superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, the purpose of the public comment period is not for exchange. As chair, you have the right to set the terms and conditions, but the intent of the public comment period is for comments from the public.
Yeah, well, I appreciate your comments, Paul, but, you know, like in the past, if you want to sit down and go over anything about the superintendent, I'd be more than happy to schedule some and sit down with you and talk with you.
It's fine, these questions are redundant, so I'll just answer them to the best I can for these things.
But anytime you want to sit down, please feel free to notify myself.
I've tried that before.
Okay.
So basically, I would say the responsibilities of the superintendent is to oversee the entire school and its entirety, everything that comes and goes here. And then this committee votes on his performance as a superintendent. So I would almost say that you are in fact his boss and you dictate kind of how he goes about his day and how he takes care of the school.
So what I want to know is why is it every month I'm disappointed? Something new has to come up and I'm here every month and I have something new every time. So my latest thing is I went to the first hockey game of the season and there's multiple kids on the team out there checking and being checked full force in illegal helmets that are probably expired as all the safety stickers are gone. Not to mention helmets with stickers might be expired as well because clearly no one checks these things. Probably same case for tonight's game I had to miss to make it to this. Growing up, that was priority number one, was the safety of the kids, but apparently not anymore. So I just don't, I don't understand why I have to come here every month with something new and nothing else being addressed from previous. I know you said that if I come up here and say something that you might be able to add it to the agenda here, but nothing's been added and nothing's being addressed besides you trying to tell me that this isn't the place to come, but I talked to my state rap, I've talked to other people, and I've been told multiple times from multiple people, this is where I come, to get the superintendent to do the right thing and my issues, and my issues are safety and the well-being of the kids. So I just don't understand. The school just keeps disappointing me. That's it.
Thank you. Well, again, if you ever want to, Paul, not to get in touch with us. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, as we've had comments the last several months, there are multiple opportunities for any member of our community to address issues of concern. The school committee has the ability to address matters of policy, budget, curriculum, and personnel. The previous speaker talks about an issue that may be relevant and certainly could be addressed by other members of the school staff. The pattern of raising school-based issues here on a monthly basis and the lack of a dialogue makes it difficult to, to address some of these concerns. Notwithstanding that, the matter of hockey helmets is certainly something we can look into. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Point of view, Chris?
Yeah, go ahead.
The public forum is a place to commend. Anything that's being said there cannot be voted on, has to be committed, put on the agenda. That was not on the agenda. If he has something, I'd like to have it on the agenda that we could discuss as a committee.
Mm-hmm.
And that would have to be done.
And it has been open to discuss these issues and matters, so he's more than welcome to address anybody in the committee, myself or Mr. Hickey?
I would, I would welcome a conversation.
Would you welcome that?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on. All right, so we'll go with the minutes. As I stated, we're not going to vote on Item B, so I just asked for a motion to approve the minutes for November 20th, 2019, school committee. Motion made by Situate, second by Whitman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, passes. Thank you. And then we have student of the month. Sandy, Bob.
Good evening. It's nice to see you all. I am delighted to be able to host our, many of our fall athletes. You won't see as many fall athletes here who, as all of the captains representing all the teams, many of them are in athletic endeavors in the winter season, so they are unable, as we have events in two sports this evening. So I'm going to start by saying a few words about our soccer program. If the soccer captains would please come forward, come stand right next to me. And we have with us tonight Noah Sinatra and Shane Griffith. Additional captain is Danny Anderson. The highlight for this team is that they were MIAA tournament competitors and for the first time in many, many years, I believe over 20, made tournament play. I want to turn the mic over to these two gentlemen to introduce themselves, their program, their grade, and their town, and maybe a highlight of their season or their athletic endeavors here at South Shore. Noah?
I'm Noah. I'm from Norwell and I'm a senior in metal fab welding. And the thing I like about soccer is just like the social aspect, meeting a bunch of new kids every year. It's been a good four years, yeah, so.
Hi, I'm Shane Griffith. I'm an electrical, I'm a junior, I'm from the town of Abington. My favorite thing about soccer is I like, it's my, it's always been my favorite sport and it's something to deal with, like the kids that I go to school with and it's really like, it's really fun for me.
Well, Shane, we're excited to see what you do in your senior year. Thank you very much, Noah. Glad to see you, gentlemen. We actually have no volleyball players here tonight because the volleyball coach is coaching volleyball and the captains are also basketball players. So Brianna Ruffin, Audrey Manning, Amy Smalley are all basketball players who are busy this evening, and, but their season highlight is that they have a 2019 vocational champions, so a great season for our volleyball team. We're excited for them and looking forward to their future as well. We do have representation from our golf team, Brendan Conley. He would come join me. He's captain along with Colby Avila and the season highlights was really strong individual play, both on behalf of Colby and Brendan himself, and that he was an MAST League winner. Maybe he can tell us a little bit about what that is.
Hi, so my name's Brendan Conley. I'm from Hall, Massachusetts, and I'm in culinary arts 11th grade. And I, I did win the MAC League. I shot a one over 72 at a cushioned river valley. And golf for me has been like a true experience, like just associating myself with everybody and getting to know like a lot of pros and a lot of people is just a special experience. And I would love to go play for college and go on further that and maybe a pro aspect sometime in life, but we'll see.
Hi, Brendan. And again, looking forward to your senior year as well.
Thank you.
Brendan, can you, can you comment on, on your win in a, in a cushioned, right?
Yes.
What were the, what were the weather conditions like? What did you have to deal with?
It was the day after like the big storm when it was all windy. Started to play everything wicked low and it was a very big challenge for me, but I ended up doing it. I was very proud of myself when I did it.
Well done.
Yeah, you should be.
There are some jealous committee members here hearing that score, yes.
Jay was angry. You know it.
I hope for a little longer enough to hit my eight.
Our cross-country team is a very young team coached by Joe Madera. Captain Sean Soddy is unavailable this evening, but he, he was our Mayflower League All-Star and Coach Madera is really looking forward to the return of many young players with only two seniors graduating. We're looking forward to what this more veteran team will be able to do next year. So many thanks to our cross-country team. And we will finish our evening with the football team. I have with me here tonight one of our captains, Bobby Fettig. You saw him also as one of our outstanding co-op students for metal fabrication and welding. Also, captains is Sean McGurk and Brian McLean, who are both unavailable due to winter sports. Student highlights for these guys, again, our second fall 2019 vocational champions. A cold December day, way down in the Cape and the only dry field we could find for hundreds of miles around. And so Bobby, if you want to talk a little bit about football or any even that night and how special that might have been.
All right, I'm Bobby. I'm from Hanson. I'm a senior in metal fab. And football means a lot to me. I've played it my whole life and it's really like, it's about all of a family. We kind of make a family and stick together all four years of high school.
Great, great, great season, guys.
Bobby, I got to ask, this has been a great season, I got to ask, so the, the Blue Hills game or the championship against Old Colony, was one more special than the other, the come-from-behind Blue Hills game or the, the vocational championship?
I'd say the championship is more special just because it's a championship, but I think the Blue Hills game is a little bit more fun, being able to come back 30-0.
Yeah, that's incredible.
Thank you.
Good season. Great moments.
Mr. Chairman.
Just knowing a little bit about their football team. They could be a guest or against, but the toughest thing to do is beat the same team not once, but twice, but to do it three times, they beat Blue Hills three times and they beat Old Colony three times.
That's right.
Those are pretty tough feats to do.
Amazing feat, nice.
You can tell by the poise and quality of answers that these gentlemen provided that Bobby's words were, were really close to their hearts and minds, is that South Shore Tech is a family and they're a family, a community of athletes. They're spectacular students, our student body is doing fantastic. We have more students involved in drama, athletics, clubs, from the chess club to Dungeon and Dragons. The school community here is really wonderful and these gentlemen are a great representation of that. So thank you very much for coming this evening.
Listen, I want to address the young man from Hall. It's good to see a Hall student do well as a non-resident to our school. As you're probably aware, the town turned down becoming a member of us, but you've made us proud and we appreciate it. It's Hall's loss and our way.
It's Hall's loss, I love it here. I enjoy it. Everybody's like my brothers and sisters here.
That's great.
Thank you.
That's what we want to hear.
Yeah, with the beach, you can practice his sand shots.
He shoots a 72, I don't think he's anywhere near the sand. Only if he wants to be.
Oh, God. Great, thank you, Sandy.
Thanks, guys.
All right, next we'll hear from our student advisory council, so we'll hear from Emily Ingram. Welcome, Emily.
Bye, guys, thank you.
Bye, thank you. Good night, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Bobby.
Okay, so today we welcomed our NHS inductees that were literally inducted about an hour ago.
That's right.
We had five juniors and one senior. Our juniors are from Whitman, Emily Caruso, who's in computer information technology, and Taylor Cole, who's from Allied Health, and Rockland Jack Keller, who's in computer information technology, and Delia O'Rourke, who's from Allied Health. And from Halifax, we have Miranda Howe, who's from DVC and graphics communications. And we have one senior who's from Rockland, Nicole Lima, who's from computer information technology. Last Saturday, December 14th, our chapter and the Skills USA state officers decorated the cafeteria into a winter wonderland for kids and parents who can't afford Christmas. There was breakfast crafts and gifts for everybody. We worked with three different local shelters, Carolina Hills House, Friends of Homeless in Weymouth, and Norwell. And we were also able to donate extra toys to our school's Toys for Tots and Marshville Community Christmas. Our school's NHS warming tree donated all the hats and mittens for the children and the parents at our school's USA holiday party. Currently, we have going the NHS's tree, the Tree of Warmth. So NHS has been doing their annual tree of warmth where they collect hats, gloves, and scarves for those who are in need, and this tree can be found in the front, by the front office. Student Council's been running its annual Toys for Tots. They've been holding their annual Toys for Toy Drive. Student Council collects toys every year and then donates these toys to sending towns with children that are in need for this holiday season. A box for this can be found in the front, front by the main office. On Friday, January 24th, Skills USA will be hosting its annual comedy night at 6:30 in the Venus, the Venus 2 in Hanson. On Wednesday, January 15th, Student Council will be attending the Winter Sea Mask Leadership Conference. So some of our students will be planning on running their own leadership workshops here and they'll be picking up other strategies to strengthen their skills in being class leaders. This is going to be held after school. Finally, Student Council is interested in organizing some cheer, some community cleanup dates. If any school committee member has a town location they would like us to, they would like to submit to us, please reach out and give us the information on the site you think could use and tender love and care. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Emily. All right, we'll move on to the treasurer report. Jim?
Thank you, Chris. Treasurer report for the month of November 30th, 2019. On the cover this month, we have the Vocational Champion Football Team posing for a photo after their win. We also have a picture of the horticultural students that were selling wreaths and trees out in the, in the front of the building. They did not have the best weather situation for selling trees and wreaths, but they, they were out there, they were doing a great job, so. And I think they got rid of most, every, every tree was, was sold and the wreaths were very popular and a great hit. Second page is our financial position, cash balances. At this point, 4.799 million dollars of that, we got 1.3 million dollars in the stabilization fund. OPEB account, $675,000, that continues to grow. So things are, we're very flush with, with cash right now, so we're in a good financial position. The, the next page is our revenue for this fiscal year so far during the month of November. As I mentioned, we did the, we did the billing of, for our member towns on November 1st and we also did our non-resident tuition billing as well. During the month of November, we did receive checks from Rockland and Situate. As you are aware, whenever we bill our member towns, there's a process in the municipality world where the bill that is received goes through the, goes through the process of approvals and so forth. And as, you know, George and Bob have a book in front of them tonight, the school committee or the selectmen, they all have to sign off on all the paperwork before a check is written. So, but this takes a while and as we're sitting here on, on December, days today?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, okay. I had 20th on the front page, I guess I was, I like to party on a Friday with you guys at some point, but. But as of today, we've received all of our member checks from all of our sending towns and most of the, I think the last non-member town, the check came in today, so we're doing well. Investments, earnings on investments, $2,700. And again, we received our chapter 78 as, as usual on a monthly basis of $370,000. So overall, we brought in a little over a million dollars this past month. And the final page is the expenditures. Again, for the month, we had $993,000 was spent on various items. Of course, the largest one is always the payroll number, $669,000. Everything else is in line. The line 28, the shop supplies and equipment, that's a large number, $43,000. Again, as the, as the shops get settled in from their, from their start in, in August, get settled in, they, they go through cycles of, of replenishing their, their, their stocks and their supplies based upon the, the projects that are at hand. So it fluctuates from here to there, but it's, again, nothing to be concerned about. They, there's still over $117,000 left in that line item. And the final number down the bottom of the page, $119,000. The debt for the windows and doors, that, that payment cycle comes through the first of December and we pay that a couple days early, so that $119,000 represents the interest and principal on our debt that went out at the end of November. So overall, we're in strong financial shape and things are going as, as planned, so.
Great, thanks, Jim. Can I get a motion for the treasurer's report? Motion made by Handover, second by Cohasset, sorry, blank there for a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Jim, anything else?
Yeah, we have, no, no budget transfers this evening. Update on the audit, Bruce Knolling and company. They were, Bruce and his staff were out on this past Monday tying up some loose ends and getting you all the numbers. They commandeered Tom's conference room for the day. They ordered Chinese food, which made the office smell wonderful and things were good. So they're, they're on target probably for the, the January or February meeting. I got to double check with Bruce as far as their presentation of, of numbers. Again, the delay a lot of times now is because of the, the Gatsby pension numbers, they need to download numbers from Plymouth County and mass teachers and incorporate their pension numbers into our, into our financial statements. The Plymouth County numbers were just released about two weeks ago when they finalized their audit for the 2018 calendar year, so that's, that's in play. I'll, I'll continue to update you on, on those numbers. And finally, as, I'm not sure I mentioned last month, but Sylvia Coppola will be, will be leaving us in the business office, so we have hired Janine Anderson. Janine started this past Monday, so the business office is, is crowded now with Sylvia and Janine working side by side. Janine's, comes from her company, can't wish she spent the last 16 years doing purchasing. So I think based upon the interview pool that we had, we had a lot of great candidates and it was a very tough selection process, but where we already purchased the order-based budgetary system, that was one of the, the strong points of Janine was the purchase order background and the various types of purchase orders that she used throughout her career. So she started this past Monday, again, and we look forward to, again, a long career with, with Janine, so things are going well. And again, we'd just like to thank Tricia for all of her payroll work and Sylvia, and she's, Sylvia originally had given us a date of this past, this Friday as her last day, but she's willing to stick around a little longer to help with the transition and learning of the, the processes for Janine, so we're, we're excited about that, so. We did have a little reception for the staff, had a reception for Sylvia on Monday afternoon, which was well attended by the staff, which is very, again, she's, she's adored by most all the staff that she comes in contact with, so she's going to be a great loss to the, to the school district and, you know, we will survive, but it's, it's going to be a loss for all of us, so.
Thanks, Jim.
Yep.
All right, move on, chairman. Nothing from the chairman tonight. We have no subcommittee reports, so we will move on to Superintendent Director, Mr. Hickey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For ease of transition, I'm going to flip the report I have and let Ms. Baldner return for, for her administrative report and then I'll move into my budget presentation.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm very appreciative, but heartfelt of the report about an event that we had today. We had Chris Heron here speaking to 600 students, a 30-minute video and a 45-minute talk followed by Q and A. I want to thank the parent association, I want to thank Superintendent Hickey, and I want to thank you for your support of this event. Supporting this event also comes in the way of things like infrastructure for sound systems that really made this an effective, thoughtful event. I also want to compliment our student body who were amazing during this, in this session. Chris Heron, you may know as a former NBA basketball player who was plagued by first an addiction to alcohol, then to oxycodone, which then led him to heroin. His story is one that has been heard before. What he really did very well today was transitioning his knowledge base to his understanding of youth through the work he's done with youth and addiction in the last 10 years, and he really did a fantastic job making a tight connection with our student body. What we really hope is that there is a heightened awareness and maybe individual students who can take action as a result of our event today. Our counselors were amazing. There were a lot of students who were seeking some support because this was a pretty intense day and I just wanted to compliment our counseling staff on the excellent work that they did today. So thank you for your support of the event. It was an excellent event and kudos to our, our counseling staff who really did the lion's share of the work today. And finally, I wanted to give a shout out to our Skills USA advisors, to Lisa Bellantoni and Paul Bello, who really did an amazing job doing a lot of work to sponsor a regional holiday party for Skills USA. So Skills USA Massachusetts Director Karen Ward was here on Saturday for this event as well as leaders from across our, our region, from other schools, supporting our students who hosted, organized, and ran this event. It was a lot of work and Lisa and Paul did a great job getting it off the ground, so thanks to them and happy holidays to all of you.
Thanks, Sandy. Happy holidays to you. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will say that the Skills USA State Director commented to me that in the 27 years that they have been doing these regional holiday parties, that she commented that what our people did to prepare that cafeteria was one of the best that she'd seen. And regarding the Heron presentation from today, to be in the gymnasium, as Sandy was saying, with 600 kids for two hours and you could hear a pin drop is, was remarkable, a testament to his presentation.
Definitely. It's good.
Okay. Happy, 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 thank you. It's easier, we have, we did have two screens. Connection lost. There are, there are some seats over here. Sandy, no pressure, Sandy, we can work with one if that's. Can you turn that a little, Tom? I can. So James, if I turn this slightly, is that going to be okay for you? Right. Good. Does that work? Are you guys good? Bob, George?
Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, fantastic. So as I started off, I'll do this, James, for you, so you're not giving me the eye there. As I've started off in past years, we always look to our school mission statement as a guide for why we are putting together a budget, because whatever we value, that's what we budget for. And that's our school mission statement, "Through rigorous and relevant hands-on instructional experiences, South Shore will develop confident, civic-minded students who achieve ambitious career goals leading to their personal fulfillment, economic independence, and positive impact on their community." I think we've seen a lot of that tonight already with the kids who are here to speak to you. I start off the presentation always by celebrating the accomplishments from this past year. Certainly, we are very proud of our MCAS, MCAS growth scores, in English especially, 10th in the state, 10th highest growth rate in the state. We continue to see students earning industry-recognized credentials, that's the third-party vocational credential attainment. Our work with the local workforce development boards has led to us in a resurgence of having evening programming for adults. We've talked a lot about athletics, that's the, essentially a summary of all the amazing things that we've accomplished just in this past fall season. We've been able to secure competitive skills capital grants so that we're not bringing capital items into the budget process. We were able to, we were able to secure about $300,000 in the past year of equipment for machining and metal fabrication, which means it's not coming into this budget. It keeps our capital number lower. We've implemented some new social studies electives, our renovations in the back of the building, a renovated locker room, near completion of our greenhouse, all of the climate control expansions that we were able to tackle last year with our HVAC, electrical and horticulture programs. We cleared out some land on the west side of the campus, which we'll eventually be able to use for heavy equipment practice and hardscape practice, giving the horticulture students an opportunity to have space that at the end of the day, they don't have to clean it up. They don't have to put it away because someone else needs to travel over that space. So that was, that was through some great planning and some great clearing work there. And as Jim alluded to earlier in terms of our debt situation, we'll be going into the fiscal '21 budget with only a final interest payment on our 2010 roof and window debt. So having a much lower debt So having a much lower debt line for all of our towns definitely makes a difference. We set goals along with saying, what a great job we've done. We need to set goals and keep moving the bar. So in looking at our NCAS results, we're going to focus on how our high-needs and economically disadvantaged students are doing. We're going to continue to hammer home the importance of attendance. In terms of curriculum and community, we're working on an expanded horticulture program. Next year will be our first group of horticulture landscape seniors, so they'll have a full complement, a full complement of students. And I'll say, just as a quick sidebar, tomorrow, the current freshman class will learn about their, about their shop placements. And I know that the horticulture program did very well, but the kids will learn tomorrow, and we're going to make a big, a big deal about having spent half their ninth-grade experience in exploratory. They'll learn their placements tomorrow. With some of that skills capital money, we're building a clean room between metal fabrication and machining to store inspection equipment. I talked about further expansion of adult ed and workforce development programs, expanded data analysis to support us, to support teachers and administrators, social emotional learning initiatives, including Chris Heron presentations. We don't want to have a one-shot deal. It has to be supported continuously. We have a phenomenal counseling staff here. In terms of facilities, as you know, I'll be talking tonight about a roof and window project for the 1992 addition. You also are aware that we were unfortunately not invited into the MSBA's core program. This is Groundhog Day. I say this to you unfortunately in December, but I will say also what I've said before. Number one, the MSBA thinks that our applications are very detailed, and there's nothing more we could be doing. Visuals, reports, narratives. It truly comes down to every year, there's a new crop of applications, and they take the neediest schools first. And because we are able to maintain our building, we probably are not going to appear at the top of the list with stories of mold and other things that would be absolutely a safety and health hazard to students on a daily basis. Nevertheless, I will be coming to you at our January meeting, asking yet again for a committee member to read a very long motion to allow me, there you go, thank you, Bob, to allow me to submit yet another statement of interest, which would be due in April of, of 2020. In terms of school culture, we continue to work on attendance improvements and school breakfast participation. We think that that's obviously an important part of the program. Our College and Career Center continues to help older students, co-op students, and alumni in terms of post-secondary placement. You know the story. For those who don't and might be watching this or looking at this document another time, we build our budget from zero. Yes, there are costs that are annual, but we look at it with a mindset that you don't simply add a little bit to each cost center. And I've said this for a long time, that this has been a real secret to our success because when people buy into this and they ask for what they need, the money is usually there. Every cost center has a heavy year, a vocational or academic area, transportation, special education. When we can control for those costs, it means the dollars are available to move. The process, we started in October, November, and it's what, leading to some early feedback and presentation for me tonight. We'll be back in January for a public hearing, and then we'll begin going to our communities as we do each winter to talk about the budget, where we're headed with that. So here's the overall proposal. The proposal is a 4.09% increase. That number is one of many that I'll mention tonight, and I usually try to qualify what that number means in terms of its impact. I can tell you that the increase of about $589,000 is going to be offset by non-resident tuition. So we are pretty close to being able to project that the total number of dollars assessed to our eight communities will likely not be higher than it was last year. It will be level or maybe a little bit lower. We don't know about some state numbers yet, but we're making the following assumptions. We're going to assume that Chapter 78 is level funded, but when we meet again on January 22nd, that's the fourth Wednesday of the month, we're going to coincide that as we have in the last few years with the governor's budget, we will know what his budget includes for minimum contributions from our towns and also the projected state aid. We're getting good news from, from Beacon Hill that regional transportation reimbursement rates will be higher, so when we calculate the transportation assessment, we used a 70% indicator for this fiscal year, we're going to be able to use 80%, which means the overall transportation, there'll be more aid to transportation, and my projections of that, the overall transportation costs are not going to go up a lot from fiscal '20 to '21. And I'm going to assume in this budget, as you did last year, that we put away money into stabilization to help offset our bus lease. So we would be coming to you on an annual basis, last year, this year probably, and fiscal '22 as well, to take a portion of our stabilization funds that were designated for transportation to help offset the, the annual bus lease cost. That's, that's about $37,000. In terms of curriculum, supplies, and technology, a lot of it is just regular replacement cycle of technology. Supply costs increases, we're noting copper, steel, gas in some of our vocational programs, and some targeted resources. And again, zero-based budgeting means that if Allied Health needs a new textbook, and HVAC needs an influx of plumbing supplies and a plumbing textbook, CIT is looking for a 3D printer, and Culinary is looking to enhance this area back here to turn it into a bit of a test kitchen, it's a one-time expense that can make a big impact for kids. The dollars get shifted around, it works for everybody. That's, that's what I see as some of the supplies highlights for some of our programs this year. In terms of capital money, which we've seen capital, which we know is part of our assessment, there's one number we bring to our communities. Capital remains a significant part of our budget with an aging building that we intend to maintain. So tonight, you'll see presentation slides on additional money for stabilization. We, I brought you something similar last year. Capital money for design and owner's project manager services for a roof and window project, septic repairs. The only instructional capital outside of septic roof and windows is about $22,000 for some replacement interactive whiteboards for some of our classes. The rest of the capital is geared towards infrastructure and facilities. Continuing with the headliners on debt, the story with debt, we wiped it out a year early, except for a little bit of interest, so that's a big game changer for us for fiscal '21 planning. In terms of teaching and support personnel, this is a year where I would be recommending some strategic shifts. We have existing positions on grants, and the timing is right to begin to move them onto the budget. They are positions we're going to keep. So in this case, it's, it's increasing a graphic communications instructor who we've had as a .75 instructor to full-time, so increasing that a quarter of a, of a position, if you will. We have an English learner instructor who is funded on our Title I and a portion of our Title II-A grants. This only moves 10% of the position, and what I'm looking at is projecting grant funding from the federal government and anticipating that it might be flat, and so I could see coming back to in, in smaller pieces to begin to move that position, but I'm, I'm not under any obligation to do it wholesale. The horticulture position would move off of our Perkins grant, and that would make room down here for the addition of a horticulture aid, so that with four grades of kids next year, we would have two instructors and a technical aide, and when we go look for this aide, we would be looking for somebody who has that technical background to support the program as the program uses our campus as its curriculum. And so the geography alone warrants an additional, an additional person. We're also going to reallocate an aide within our budget who we have right now. There's, there's a paraprofessional who's retiring, and I'm going to be looking to just, just to, to keep you informed, our electrical program continues to be oversubscribed. We are, we're trying to find ways to support them and the popularity. It's time for us to bring a technical aide into our electrical program as well, especially to, to support in two main ways. One is to support the teacher of the underclassmen to assist with the booth work that the younger kids do in the shop, and also to support the teacher of the upperclassmen, these, mostly the pre-coop juniors and the, some of the seniors who aren't on co-op as they continue to do work around the building. There's an additional special education teacher who I hope will be able to serve, not only academic, but also begin to, also begin to support students in vocational areas, supporting them directly in related classes as well as in their, their shop settings. And the final headliner here, as you've heard us talk about and we talk about with our towns, is that in our budget, we are an entity unto ourselves as if we had our own zip code, and therefore, we have to keep funds in our budget. About 16% of our budget includes insurances, retirement, payroll tax, OPEB, unemployment, etc.
Snow removal.
Etc. Here's a, here's a, I'll, I won't repeat a lot of this, but this is the breakdown of the capital items. I'm going to get into a little more wonky detail about the roof stuff in just a moment, but that unpacks the capital number, 782,414. Last year's capital was about 720, so when I combine capital and debt, last year we had about 720 in capital, about 115 in debt. This year, we have nearly zero in debt and about 782. So it's a net reduction if you look at capital and debt for, for, for one year. The septic repairs amount there, the engineers estimated $250,000 for repairs back in 2018. We've had one contractor give us an estimate of about $300,000, so I'm asking for 280, and then we're going to get some additional information, but I think that's a safe number that we could sustain for the repairs that we need. So to talk a little bit about the roof and window project, this is not a done deal. This is simply, this is a, this is a conceptual idea of where we need to go next as we begin to look at capital items that are definitely, we would definitely not be able to, to fund in one budget cycle. And I appreciate committee members' feedback, even last month when I mentioned this briefly. So the concept would be that we would put enough money into the budget as of July 1st for us to focus on owner's project manager and an architect for, for design. State procurement expects that we would hire an owner's project manager if a cost, if a construction cost was going to be $1.5 million or higher. So that's why you'll hear me say OPM and designer. So if we were to spend from the summer into the early fall securing both of those parties, the owner's project manager working for us, the designer also doing a job for us, we should be able to, we should be able to then decide, what are we going to go out to bid for? And I think that's not something that needs to be decided tonight or even at the beginning of this cycle, but it will be an important conversation because you'll hear me talk about a roof, windows, and the metal panels as you go around this addition, the metal panels that are underneath. The engineers itemized each of those three, but they've made clear that you can do a roof and not do the windows. That's entirely possible. One of the things I'll be talking to you about as we get a little bit deeper into this would be the benefit, the cost benefit, the convenience. We could spend the summer of '21 doing the roof. Maybe in the summer of '22, we do the windows and the metal panels. Or with a little planning and dialogue, we might decide it would be better to do it all at once. But those are some of the things that capital projects, subcommittee, and full committee members, I would really appreciate us all talking about. If we got to the point where in the fall, we had a plan, we knew what we wanted to go and look for, we could then go out to bids off that menu, all of it, just the roof. And as I say here, we might be able to push that windows project out. We can determine the scope, we can determine the, the low bidder in the fall. And the engineers are advising me that for us to secure work in the following summer, we would really need to have bids out on the street in the fall. So what does it, what does that mean on a practical level? Some of you started to talk about this even last month. Stabilization funds, excess and deficiency funds, borrowing money. I think the general sentiment would be, if we have to borrow money, we would want it to be as low as possible without draining our resources to the point that we couldn't respond to another need. So conceptually, at some point, if we need, if we need to borrow money, we would then have to go seek town approval. So imagine that in December, we have made decisions on what we want to go out to bid for. We go out to bid, we get some numbers. Now, this committee has the authority to vote to authorize debt. If debt is authorized by this committee, the secretary would send notice to each of the towns within a week, and the towns would have two months or 60 days to call a special town meeting. The vote, the support would need to be unanimous, not a unanimous positive vote, but any one town who were to, who would reject the idea would mean that the debt authorization would stop. So the message I started to mention last month, I'll say again, if we know what we want, we're going to have to communicate early and often. I know that in 2010, our communities supported without hesitation that need to replace the roof over the 1962 addition, but they do deserve to know facts and exactly what we're trying to achieve. So it's possible that we could, we could say that we can, we need to borrow for a third of the project costs, and if we explain to the communities why, why now, and they're supportive, they don't need to call a town meeting, they could simply say, okay, they're going to go out, they're going to, they're going to, they want to contract with this contractor, and then the debt cost, when would we start paying this off? The debt cost would become part of the next year's budget. So imagine if I were here a year from now, making a presentation, and we were able to say with specificity, it's the fiscal '22 budget, we've secured the engineer, we've secured the architect, we went out to bid, we've got prices, we know how much we're going to take from stabilization, and this is how much we need to borrow. We could, hopefully, within a year, we'll be able to lay all of that out to our communities so that we'd be in a position for, for the, for the summer of 2021.
Tom, on that, on that project, is there any state or federal money that would help us with the project?
Short of MSBA, I would, I would say no. And MSBA-
Yeah, it's not a full building, but I mean, it's repairs.
I'm, there, there is, I mean, it's an interesting point, Dan. There, the MSBA, we've benefited from the MSBA's accelerated repair program twice. The roof in 2010, and you might remember the, the boilers that we replaced as well, and we used some of our E and D money in order to help offset that. But the catch is, if you go into the accelerated repair program, they won't consider you for the core program, which is the, the, the larger scope. And they, and, and what they've said to me, I've asked questions similar, and they've said most school districts who are looking to get into the program end up having to take on some projects of this magnitude on their own before getting accepted for what would be a larger project.
The reason I'm asking is we're having such a difficult time convincing the state that we need to increase the size of this building, right? Just keep it, just to preserve, right? There's other towns and cities and towns and school districts that are needier. I mean, are we ever going to be approved? I mean, we're approved when, well, we had the addition when Whitman Hansen came and put this addition on. I mean, how long did that take?
I, I think eventually, yes, but it's going to have to, quite honestly, Dan, I think it's going to have to be during a time period where the economy is strong and the needs, and the needs of buildings elsewhere in the Commonwealth, that we, I mean, there were 60, 61, 51 municipalities put in 61 statements of interest, and they chose 12. And those figures have been remarkably consistent over the last several years. And the needs of those 12, the potential needs of those 12, in their mind, they don't, they, they're clearly, as you said, they're, they're clearly needier. So we continue to try to make targeted decisions each year. Hopefully, we'll hear better news in a year, but we, we can't, we, we don't want to wait, but we need to be reasonable. We can't do it all. We're not going to borrow it on our own and do it all. I'd wait for the 50% coupon too, but if we're talking roof and septic, I don't consider that extravagant. We're just going to be smart about it and plan it over a period of time. Sorry about this slide. This is, this presentation is designed not only for viewers and discussion, but also for readers as well. But I just wanted to unpack for you, if you're interested, the original cost, the original projection for roofs, windows, and metal panels. That's how you can read this, and all the numbers add up to the right. This is what our engineers told us in the master facilities plan. They also advised us to put in a 4% cost escalation, so this line here tells you what the totals would be. So to summarize, if we were doing all of these projects in fiscal '21, we're looking at about $2 million. And then on top of that, about a contingency that they estimate about 6.5%. So before you, before, there are too many numbers being thrown around. What's in this budget below this gray line? The money in the fiscal '21 budget would be for the design and the project manager costs, and there is enough money here, if you add these two together, that's what would add up to the capital amount on the previous slide. If we wanted to have an architect design for us, roof, windows, and metal panels, and they do all the design work at once, we can still decide only to go out to bid for one thing, if we wanted to, and we'd have the plans ready to then put out on the street for bids at another time. So that's, that would be enough funding for us to map out- So that would be enough funding for us to map out what we're looking for, get those technical plans ready. These slides, members of the committee, are slides you've seen before. This is a summary of our master facilities plan. I'm going to go at a quicker pace here. The engineering firm told us we had about $11.8 million of maintenance to our building. That's not adding an additional square foot. If we wanted to add on to address, to alleviate space issues, probably adding somewhere between $25,000 to $40,000 square feet, a total price of $48 to $51 million. That's not for this year, that's for another time, but that is ultimately what this committee has become well aware of in the last few years. The biggest picture of our school's need to address what Dan was saying earlier and to address just the bread and butter functioning of the building are the numbers that you'll see here and on other slides as well. I also cherry picked a few items from the various recommendations they made, so these numbered items come directly from the plan, septic, replace the windows, the metal panels, and the roof. But there are other items that don't make the cut, don't even make the conversation. This goes back to, if we're in MSBA, we can address other issues that deal with ventilation systems and electrical and whatnot. Again, these numbers here are 2018 numbers. You want to have fun at home, multiply these numbers by 1.04, and again, and again, and again, and that will give you a 4% cost escalation. That's not for fun, that's just reality. I've shown these slides before. The engineers pointed out to us that we could add on to the front of our school and fill in this courtyard. We could add on to several shops here in the back. We could build over on the east side of the campus where the current modular unit is, which is now nearing 20 years old. There's the dark roof that you see here on the left, there's your 1992 addition, that's the roof that I'm talking about that needs replacement on the left. And then here are just some shots of various parts of the school that are either outdated or too small. Again, a modular unit is not supposed to last forever. We've kept that, again, kept that in good shape. In terms of enrollment and assessment information, I'll pivot here. I give you some annual enrollment updates for each of our district communities, and our enrollment trends over a period of time using October 1 numbers. And then while this is going to be, this will be part of the, this will be part of the show in January, it is important to point out that how a town gets assessed is really the number that matters at the end of the day for your communities. Jim and I could project capital, debt, and transportation, not a problem. I started to do that earlier in the presentation, this will probably be lower. But about three-quarters of any town assessment is based on the minimum local contribution, and then following that, any other costs above the minimum local contribution. That's what we must be slightly patient on and wait for January. But as you know from our regional agreement, this is a, these are the definitions of how we calculate those numbers, and we provide our communities with a great amount of detail so that anybody can look to see, that's how they arrived at this number. Oh, I get it now, if you've got this much that you want for capital, and my town is 20% of the school, then I'm responsible for 20% of the capital. It's, the state formula, a little complicated, the other parts of our regional agreement, not that complicated and easy to map out. I'm sorry, Bob.
Yeah, on that minimum local contribution, I know the macarons have been playing with it up there. Have they come to a conclusion? I've been following the, from the association.
Yeah, yes.
That's got worse than our original formula, as far as I can figure out.
There are improvements when it comes to funding for things that would benefit all kids in all towns. I'll give you just one example that has no impact on us. Getting your communities funding for out-of-district special education transportation helps every community's bottom line. That is something that has been woefully underfunded. So my take on it is while we would not personally benefit, the communities who fund us will benefit. It will assist their school district's bottom line, and that's a good thing. But in terms of direct funding, Bob, there doesn't, I've not seen anything specific at this moment that tells us exactly what we will be getting. I believe we would at a minimum see an increase of something like $30 a student, which is what we've seen in the past. However, they are going to be phasing in more funding over a seven-year period. So if they change too many variables, if they require some communities to pay a little bit more by adjusting the formula, and they add some aide, this is a year where it's, I think about back in fiscal '07 when there were some statutory changes to the formula and it caused a bit of a zig and zag on, you know, it wasn't, it was even less predictable. So I'm not, I don't think we're going to see a big windfall, but we have to celebrate the fact that our communities may see some benefits on their side.
Yeah, from what I think about it, some communities are, you know, the richer communities, Cohasset, the whole world, even, truth freedom, and I think, I don't think we'll get much of richer communities. I think they're robbing, using Elizabeth Warren's thing, they're going to steal from the rich to give to the poor.
I think they're looking at a reallocation of dollars and anticipation of continued economic growth. Nobody can guarantee numbers for budget years where monies don't exist. One piece of good news, although I haven't seen exact figures, is that you probably noticed from the news recently, they took a while dealing with the fiscal '19 supplemental budget. That was surplus revenue, and it took a while for them to get to that point. So we know that there was $5 million of additional regional transportation aid baked into that number. They've yet to parse it out, but we have a, we have a transportation reimbursement fund that we established several years ago, which allows us to take unanticipated regional transportation money, because they were on a totally different cycle from our fiscal years, that we can use that as an offset for next year. So I'm cautiously optimistic that we will be able to take that money and be able to apply it to future transportation costs. So I'll be very eager to see what these numbers look like. So our January meeting, I mean, Jim certainly turns things around on a dime. Jim's like, yep, I'm ready, as long as the governor does his thing, he'll punch some numbers in, and we'll have something, the ink won't be dry when we meet on January 22nd.
Jill, whatever her name is on that, that one's that sends out from the state association. Now, Rockland, I think is going to benefit pretty good, well, they just got two new schools through a new school under the town.
Yeah, I haven't seen that report, but there should be something coming out soon because all municipalities are planning. So that's a summary of how, as you know, how we unpack our assessments. Next steps, final slide here. As I said, we'll meet again January 22nd, we'll take a look at what the governor's budget has to say, we'll be able to comment on what's changed with minimum contributions, what's changed with state aid, fill in the other pieces that accompany debt, capital, and transportation. We'll seek to certify our budget at our February meeting and then begin our roadshow to finance committees. We know for right now that most of our communities have penciled in a town meeting date, so we have Abington and Situit with April town meeting dates at this point. They're subject to change for various reasons, and we still have at least four communities committing to that first Super Monday in May. But again, that would be the projection going forward, so I appreciate your attention on this. Are there any other questions I could answer for you at this point?
Cohasset, they haven't set a town meeting date?
The last time, the last time we checked, it wasn't, it wasn't a date that we could publish.
It's usually a standard date year after year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. So move on to administrative reports?
Actually, we flipped that, Mr. Chairman, so Sandy talked about Chris Heron a little earlier, so we're all set to move on.
Thank you. All right. There's no unfinished business tonight. We'll move on to new business. So I ask for a motion to approve the field trip as listed.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Noel, second by Situit. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next is a, ask for a motion to accept the donation, the list that the donation as listed. Motion made by Hanover, second by Cohasset. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Warrants?
Go ahead.
I'd like to just add something. I know it's on the new business, but the letters that we have here from the Rockland Prince, very supportive. They ran into a GM this year with their holiday stroll, and they were having a hard time getting up things, so they called me, see if we could get some, help them out with some advertising, get some postings, stuff for the Department. I immediately did what I do best, passed them on to Dr. Hickey, and he took care of the situation with the Department, and we received a nice letter here, PM rep and the president thanking us for our great contribution because without that, they wouldn't have the success that they had. So I think that should be.
We were happy to help.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, warrants, 10, 10A, 10B, 11, 11A, and 7,188 totaling $967,432.33.
Second.
Second by Situit. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Any requests for action?
I'll make one. Something that came up earlier tonight, I don't want to make an issue out of it, but I think it ought to be looked into at one of those athletic games. Just a CYA.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
I have one other question.
Sure.
When we do, we have a sports game, football, like when we play, right? Do they film that?
Yes.
You ought to get some cases, sort of like Whitman-Hanson cable studios.
The coaches will film it, absolutely.
Yeah, and because they're always looking for things to put on the air, and we can put it on.
The problem is that it won't be, they don't commentate, they don't commentate unless you did it. Somebody went in the studio, did a double over. Is it filmed for study purposes?
No, just for showing something for cable studios.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's called huddle.
Thank you.
I mean, there's nobody that's.
Commentating.
You could do, you could go in the studio, would do a double over with, if you had a couple of students that did it, and they could actually call the game as they're watching it.
As opposed to commentating live during the game.
There's no live commentating.
That's right.
It's not like before, like you go to Rockland, or you go to Whitman, you have people in the stands or you have, they have doing the thing there. A few years ago, we tried to get something started into that here with a club, we had camera club, a photography club or something there, some former teacher was trying to get it going, and it just didn't take off.
Oh, even if we have an in-house basketball game, you know, with somebody calling the, you know, just some way.
But they do film them. They do film them for study purposes, the training for the kids, because you could talk to them all day long.
Yeah, but they have.
But if you have now the film documentation to show them, the mistake that you're talking about, it's a real good tool, teaching tool.
I was looking for ways to promote that.
Thank you.
I would ask for safety.
Thanks, Danny. Thanks, Bob. All right. Entertained a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Whitman, second by Rockland. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Happy holidays, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Say that.
Thank you.
Put it in the mail.
Check it, it's in the mail.